I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 15, 2022, Tiana-Corder Madera Town Council Meeting. And with that, I'll go ahead and call the meeting in order. Rebecca, can we get roll call, please?
Councilmember Beckman?
Here.
Councilmember Mangan?
Here.
Councilmember Ravazio?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Here.
And Mayor Casissa?
Here. And if we salute the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the meeting for public comment. This gives anybody from the public an opportunity for public comment. You are limited to three minutes. At this point in time, I don't see any hands raised, but Rebecca, I think we did get at least one email comment in.
Yes, that is correct. And before I press the timer on myself, I just wanted to say it was a longer email and the sender, it is being uploaded to the website for viewing by the council and the public. And the sender has asked me to start reading at the bottom of the first page. So I am going to start the timer and then start reading. And this is from James Jordan, who says, "It is my opinion that the town government continued to unfairly favor artificial turf soccer fields in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Development process after the town survey. This was done by giving supporters of artificial turf disproportionate representation in the two focus group meetings. It was also done by shortening and limiting the opportunities for the residents to participate in the planned community engagement workshops. It was also done by promoting and distributing the Parks and Recreation Poll survey questions multiple times after the ETC survey that allowed people, including non-residents, to vote repeatedly. The results of the poll/survey questions have not been disclosed yet, but the results clearly will not be a valid or reliable indicator of the overall opinion of town residents. If the town government wanted to promote the installation of an artificial turf soccer field in the town park, it should have been handled separately from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Development process. Instead, the process was distorted and dominated by the unfair emphasis on installing an artificial turf soccer field in the town park. The town government did not do an environmental impact study to learn effects that an artificial turf soccer field facility would have on the town park environment. The town government did not do a social impact study to learn the effects that an artificial turf soccer field facility in the town park would have on the community. The town government's position in favor of installing a full-sized artificial turf field has been stated as a matter of providing recreational opportunities for elementary school children or elementary school students. There has been little or no apparent consideration of other alternatives that could better serve this purpose, like improving the present grass fields or having smaller artificial turf play areas at both Neil Common School and Cove School. The town government has not adequately considered the possible adverse health effects that artificial turf fields can have on young children. Independent studies have shown that artificial turf fields can lead to human exposure to lead and toxic chemicals, including PFAS, forever chemicals. The prevailing westerly winds will blow pollutants from an artificial turf soccer field in the town park over the nearby residential areas and the canal, presenting health consequences. In 2008, the Center for Disease Control issued a health advisory on potential exposure to lead in artificial turf, Public Health Issues, Actions, and Recommendations, and he provided the link. The CDC recommendations on the use of fields with artificial turf include the following: General Recommendations on the Use of Fields with Artificial Turf. At this time, the CDC does not yet understand the potential risks associated with exposure to dust from worn artificial turf. The following precautions can be taken to minimize any potential risk. Field managers should consider implementing dust suppression measures. Suggestions for dust suppression measures can be found at NJDHS's website, which is provided in the Additional Information section. There are a couple more bullet points, but as I said, this email came in shortly after 5:00 PM and has been uploaded to the town's website and emailed to the council for the public and the council to view. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more email comments that we received?
Let me close that and refresh. The only other email that we just received is for a later item.
Okay. And with that, I don't see any other hands raised from the attendees, so I will go ahead and close public comment out. We do not have any presentations tonight. I'll move to the consent calendar. These are items that are a normal course in business. They've been previously discussed. It can be passed by a single motion. Any member of the town council staff or the public may request an item to be removed for further discussion. So with that, is there anybody from town council, town staff, or the public that wishes to have a consent item removed for further discussion? I don't see any hands raised. Rebecca, any emails come in on this?
We did not receive any emailed public comments.
Thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to town council for a motion to approve consent calendar items 4A through 4H. Is there a motion? Yeah, Bob?
Still moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thanks, Charles. Any further discussion? I will go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Casissa?
Yes. We have no public hearings tonight, so we will move to our business items. First up is 6A, Consideration of Possible Adoption, Resolution Number 19/2022, which is approving the revised use policy for the digital marquee board at the community center, and also consider delegating the responsibility of future use policy decisions to the Park and Rec Commission. And with that, is Ashley up for this, Todd? Because I don't see her on.
No, I don't see her either. Let me, do we want to take a later item and I can see if she's having trouble with her?
Yeah, let's do this for now. If everybody doesn't mind, let's, let's go to 6C because both 6A and 6B belong to Ashley from Park and Rec. So if everybody's okay with it, let's move to 6C, which is consideration, and we'll go back to the other two soon as Rebecca can get ahold of her. 6C, which is consideration, proposed to hire a building inspector, plans examiner for the planning and building department. I won't read all this. Let me turn it over to Todd and Chris for the staff report, please. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I want to introduce Chris Ragland, our building official. Just to tee up this conversation, this conversation is very similar to our conversation last year about code enforcement. As you may recall, we started with Code Enforcement Services for the town of Corder Madera on a contract service basis. And what we found, just like we're finding now on the building side for inspector services, it's really expensive. You pay not just the hourly rate, but you pay for all the over, you know, all the oversight and extras that come with that. And we also found in our analysis, at the recommendations of Chris, really what we're trying to do here, our big picture goal, is to improve our service delivery and really control our philosophy with those services and do it in a fiscally prudent way. And so really, if you think about this, this is a two-meeting process, just like the code enforcement discussion. We're looking for your feedback. We're asking for flexibility. And so as we approach in the future, thinking about this building, the building inspection services right now, it's just contracted. So we want, we want some flexibility to fill those services, either through contract, a full-time position, a part-time position, or a combination thereof. And again, at this time, what we're recommending to do that is to approve the job descriptions before you. Again, it's a two-meeting process and setting a salary range for this position. And Chris is positioned to give you some background of how we came to this recommendation. Ultimately, we look at this of having redundancies in the system. And so we're really going to try to, if you, if the council approves this over two meetings, would be to recruit a physician, hire someone full-time, and then to have some backup capabilities if our inspector is out on vacation, that we have the ability to bring someone in on a part-time basis or a contracted basis. And so with that, I'll stop there and just turn it over to Chris to kind of walk you through his recommendations. Chris?
Thank you, Todd, Mayor, council members. And I really appreciate Todd, his support, Adam Wolf's support, and the team in this effort to hire within. And I think one of the key pieces to this is we can show that we can do it financially to hire this position. Most importantly, the quality of services that this kind of a position can provide. Having it in-house with a staff member that's familiar with our organizational culture and values, our local policies and procedures, and customer service ideals. And that that staff member can attend employee trainings, participate in team meetings, and assist with implementing permit process improvements. And having that personal approach with our applicants, our contractors, local contractors, our businesses, design professionals, it makes such a big difference if someone's in-house and they know how we operate in our procedures and our ideals. And so I think this is going to be a really big win for having responsive and quality customer service.
And so what we did is we brought in Janet, our HR manager, and really looked at what in similar positions, full-time positions, the salary range. You'll see that it's very similar to one of the current positions we have. And I think that's just, you know, I don't know if that's silly luck or if that was a strategy. I'm not sure, Chris, if you can speak to that. But this really slots the position appropriately within our town staff, but also regionally with other inspectors. But we're happy to answer any questions if you have anything regarding the salary range. And I just can't emphasize enough, one of the things that really jumped out to me when we interviewed Chris and we recruited him for the position, it was really, we want to, we want to really take our services to the next level and just high level, looking at how we're set up now and others in this county. What jumps out at you? And this is one of the key recommendations of Chris before he ever came to the town, was really, we need to have this in-house person for this position, someone that we can, as he said, mentor and follows, you know, our philosophy in providing these services. And so with that, you know, we're excited to bring this to you. Just one other historical note, you know, again, we're not, we're trying to improve our services. We're staying within the budget. A lot of these moves will actually help us stay under our historical budgets, as you can see in some of the fiscal analysis. Something historically that the town has done, going back to the early 2000s, when we went from 62 positions to, in the mid to low 40s, where they really cut services back then. And what they tried to do when they brought them back, they, they had a philosophy that we were going to fill these positions by contract, right? You could, you could, if you had to eliminate them at any time, you can do it. And really trying to, you know, in their mind, you know, control, you know, benefits and retirement cost. And really, that's, that was their goal. And what happened was, when you fast forward to now, we have, through reforms, controlled those benefit and pension costs. But also to get the quality of person here to recruit them, you have to have a certain type of package. And then that's important. And I think it's the most important thing to point out. And ultimately, what we did is, you know, looking back, we were trying to save money, but we actually hurt ourselves from a service delivery standpoint. And we're paying more money today for those contracted services. So I really can't emphasize that enough. And I really appreciate, you know, Chris's thought into the staff report and recommendation.
And with that, before I open up a question, just clarify, there's no, we're not taking any action tonight, correct? You're just looking for flat-out direction from us, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and open it up. Does anybody have any questions from the town council? Yeah, Eli.
Thank you, Fred. Thanks a lot, Todd and Chris. I think this is great. I totally see the benefit here. I just wanted to understand, so in the staff report, you gave us the salary range, which is really helpful. And then you also gave us, over the last three fiscal years, what we spent for contract building inspection, plan check, and miscellaneous related to that, which was also really helpful. And then if I did my math right, I added those together. It looks like fiscal year 1920, we spent about 290 grand on these contract services. The following year, we spent like 430 grand. And then so far, this fiscal year, it looks like we're at about 210. And so my question was just, are you able to give us a sense of what the fully loaded cost of this in-house, this new in-house position, is just that we can get a sense of how that fully loaded cost will compare to what we're paying currently? Not just the salary, but everything, benefits and whatnot?
Yeah. So if you hired someone that had the top, you know, full family medical, which is about $22,000 a year, they would be a Pepperott employee. You're looking at probably about, with the salary range, in the $19,000 to $25,000 range a year. So you'd probably add anywhere, depending, there would be a range of, you know, $30,000 to $50,000 on top of that salary. So if you looked at...
Okay. So basically, just take the salary range, multiply it by 12, and then add 30 to 50 grand to estimate fully loaded cost?
That's correct.
Okay. I will do that math now, but...
About 130,000 plus or minus, off the top of my head.
Again, that's a, that's a top step employee that has all the benefits, which, you know, we'll see what happens, you know, with who we recruit. But yeah, worst-case scenario, you're looking at the 120 to 130 range, fully benefited.
Perfect. Thanks so much.
Anybody else? Yeah, Lea.
Thanks, Brad, and thanks, Eli. That was one of my questions as well. I think this makes a lot of sense. And, you know, one of the things I've heard from residents is the inconsistency of inspectors. And, you know, that they'll sort of alight on certain things that have never been a problem before, or sort of they're told. And it just kind of is luck of the draw who you get in terms of whether they, you know, have those issues. So I think it makes sense to have somebody who can be consistent and, as you said, reflect our values and our training. I did have a question just about going from, you know, the benefit of contract, right, is the flexibility. So is there a concern that if we have somebody in-house and we've got tons of inspections, you know, is that going to sort of affect our ability to provide good customer service in terms of providing timely inspections? It's going to be a backup because you've only got one person doing it. I guess on the flip side, you know, if there's not a lot of building going on, and so there isn't a huge demand, do we, is there a risk? We don't have enough work to keep this person busy? Just curious, you know, what, what you've thought about for those things. Thank you.
Very good question. So currently, right now, what is wise about having a building inspector/plans examiner is, and in jurisdiction this size, it's not uncommon to have the inspector also do some plan review, plans examiner step in and do inspections when needed. And that's a skill set I have as well. And so we'll have a lot of versatility that way. In addition to if we become overloaded with plan review or inspections, we can contract out those additional services when needed. So as Councilmember Beckman had said, that we can actually have enough, I mean, we'd have to get really, really slow in order for this position not to have something to do, because there's so much plan review and inspections on a daily basis. And so if, if we drop down to half of what we do now, for example, that would still be enough work for a full-time position to do plan review and inspections, if that helps.
Thanks, Lea. Anybody else? I have one question. Based upon what you just said, does that mean that this wouldn't be a position considered for potentially a shared service with another town or city? And I guess the flip side of that is, did we look into anything like that? I don't know if any city has that available, that we could share that, or is it just not worth it? Because there's too much work going on.
No, I think there's, there's good possibility of that taking place if such an intergovernmental agreement were to come about, where we can continue to rely on these contracted services. And with some projects, we might do so more than others. One of the quality pieces of the role like this is they can take those difficult projects that are not easy to maneuver from a plan review or inspection aspect. Whereas if it's something very simple but large, then that can be, you know, contracted out to a third party easily. So just like many times, the plans review I do when I have time are those that require more handholding, more customer service attention than otherwise a standard plans or project might be.
Thanks.
So...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If we were to enter an agreement with a local jurisdiction to provide additional services, this is the kind of role that would be versatile enough to where we could do that if needed.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry, Todd, were you going to say something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Well, I just wanted one thing from Councilmember Beckman's question. The range in a total fully loaded position would range anywhere from, you know, at the top step, low, bottom step to top step, anywhere from $120,000 to $150,000 is going to be the total range. And we'll clarify that in the second report if you ask to come back. And one other piece that I did want to mention, Mr. Mayor, and Chris is, I've introduced him to the Larkspur City Manager, and we're going to start negotiations with them. But yes, our intent with our current permit tech situation, if we're able to do in-house plan checks and bring in inspector services, as well as our current building official, we're going to try to start sharing some services to our, our neighbors. And there's going to be some opportunities there as well. So we're building our relationship now. And I know there's, there's already been a lot of asks in the area for these types of services. And I think we're positioned to possibly do something, again, not at the expense of our service delivery. But if we have bandwidth and expertise, we're going to explore that and bring that back to the council for consideration.
Okay, thanks. And he answered my follow-up question, was, would service suffer? But it sounds like service will not suffer. It sounds like service would improve.
Yeah. And the Councilmember Mangan's question, yes, well, you know, this doesn't handcuff us in any way. We're gonna, we're gonna probably, you know, we want to position ourselves to share services always, because it just makes us all better. I feel like if it works out and meets the criteria that we just talked about. But also, we're going to want to attack, you know, inspection services at any time, you know, any one of the three ways. You know, if we're going to do contracted services, we want that to be limited. We want that to be when someone's on vacation for two weeks, they're out for a month. We bring in, you know, contract services limited, right? Because it's a little more expensive, like we talked about, but at least we still need the work to get done. But there might be a case where our, we get really busy and we may want to bring someone in part-time, you know, for three months, 30 hours a week, we may want to. And so that's something we want to be positioned to bring to council quickly, to bring that to your attention and ask for your authorization within the budget.
Thanks. Any other questions from town council members? Okay, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is anybody from public wishing to speak on this topic? And while we're waiting to see if any hands will be raised, Rebecca, do we have any email comment in on this?
Thank you, Mayor Casissa. We did not have any emailed public comments on this item.
Thank you. And I don't see any hands raised. So we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and a potential, we don't need a motion, just to provide direction to staff. Yeah, Bob, go for it.
This is a great idea. We had a building inspector here for years. Todd, was it Walt, I think, was his name? And he was here for a long time. This is a big, big service for residents. Because when you have someone who's done this for years, they can put things into perspective, you know, they can give you context. I went on a lot of inspections with Walt, and he'd say, "Oh, yeah, I was here 10 years ago. They did this." You know, and explain the whole thing. And I know what they're trying to do. But even though our code is precise, there is still some subjectivity involved. And, you know, that's where the building inspector comes in handy, and he can help walk people through what they need to do. Because a lot of this stuff is really pretty complex. And having someone who is doing it on a daily basis, knows the community, knows what we're doing, it'll be a huge, huge win for us and for the residents, really. So I'm all for this. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Who else? Nobody else? Okay, I, go ahead, Eli, and then Charles.
I was just going to say, I think Bob put it beautifully, and I second all his comments.
Charles?
My experience is having in-house and having the familiarity with the locality. And it's always a better service offering for the long term for the residents and then also for the town. Support it if it makes physical sense.
Thanks, Lea.
I agree with my colleagues. I think this makes sense.
Thanks. I too. I think I agree with everything that's been said. So with that, I think, Todd, you and Chris both have direction on which way to go, which means you'll bring this back to us, I guess, at our next meeting.
That's correct. Thank you very much.
Welcome. One thing I would suggest maybe, and this is more for budget time, if somehow maybe we do an analysis, maybe on, and I don't know if this is in there already, on the number of positions per department and if, you know, employees versus consultants. Because I know Ashley's hired a couple more people. We're looking at hiring another person now. And maybe we just do some analysis that gives us more background and we're going with this, so we can get a grip on the fiscal side of it.
You got it. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, with that, we're going to move back to 6A, because we now have Ashley on the phone. Or I'm sorry, on the Zoom call. I'm so...
You're welcome, Chris. Thanks. There she is. Sorry. I apologize for being late. And I might turn off my video if I've got some spotty internet here.
No problem. Your kids are more than welcome also, so don't worry if you see them in the picture.
They're part of the implosion. They're, they're a little under the weather, so.
Sorry to hear that. So we're going to go back to 6A, Consideration of Possible Adoption, Resolution Number 19/2022, Approving Revised Use Policy for the Digital Marquee Rita Board at the Community Center, and Consideration Delegating the Responsibility of Future Use Decisions to the Park and Rec Commission. I'll turn it over to Ashley. But Ashley, correct me if I'm right or I'm wrong. Is this your two-year anniversary today, or is it tomorrow? Or am I off by a day?
It is the 17th.
Seven, okay, I'm off by two days. All right, congrats.
Yeah, thank you.
And then you're there for two years.
I know. And we're almost out of COVID and everything.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. You've provided the introduction and recommended actions. Basically, the background is that staffs proposed the replacement of the freestanding analog marquee with the current double-sided digital marquee in 2011. And town council approved that project in 2012 and allocated funds for replacement. And the final review of the digital marquee project was presented and discussed at the February 23, 2017, Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, where they referred it for design review and approval, permit, signed permit approval for the planning commission. The planning commission had two hearings, one on February of 2017 and the second on May of 2017, where they did issue the permit to, to move forward. But reviewing past notes and staff meetings and meeting minutes, there's been no location of the form, of the use policy formally being adopted. So having reviewed it and seeing some areas that we could have improvement and transparency, we thought it was a good time to formalize the use policy, as well as make suggested recommendations for your consideration tonight. So in discussion, approval of a use policy, stuff around, again, that there was no reference to a formal approved policy. And there's reference to staff minutes on February 23, 2017, Commission, Planning Commission meeting. And then at some point, there's a couple other changes that made, that has transpired. So at some point, the message displayed changed from black text on a white background to white text on a black background to minimize driving distractions. This was an important point that was referenced in one of the planning commission reviews, so I wanted to bring that up tonight. And then on December 6 of 2021, the Parks and Recreation Commission approved removing the commercial message line item from the master fee. And the recommended fee schedule emitting the line item was reviewed by town council and will be going into effect on July 1. And until then, we're not going to be accepting any commercial use messages. And then after the discussion in September 2021 with the Parks and Recreation Commission, there's further clarification from staff to define the prohibited religious and commercial messages on the, on the existing use policy. And staff consulted the town attorney and the draft policy seen in attachment two was developed. And in order to clearly communicate the intended purpose and function of the digital marquee at the community center, the draft policy is structured into four sections. One, findings and purpose. Two, definitions. Three, policy. And four, the duties of the Parks and Recreation Department in implementing the policy. Staff notes that the previous concerns expressed by the commission regarding prohibited messages and the definition of commercial should be satisfied by sections one and two of the draft policy. And section one describes the intended purpose of the marquee as an important medium for providing notice to Corder Madera residents about town-sponsored and town-wide special events and town-endorsed messages. Messages should increase awareness for those events to foster civic pride. Further, the Parks and Recreation Department's mission to create community through people, parks, and programs. And staff emphasizes that section 1D states, "By adopting this policy, the town does not intend to create any public forum on the digital marquee. The town is elected to make the marquee available to announce town-sponsored and town-wide special events and town-endorsed messages to achieve its goal of providing public notice, fostering the civic pride, and strengthening community connectivity. With respect to town-wide special events and town-endorsed messages, the Parks and Recreation Department shall not discriminate on the basis of the viewpoint in a message and its administration of this policy. And additionally, in section four, it defines how the policy will be implemented by the Parks and Recreation Department, including message review and prioritization, which should clarify staff role and responsibilities. And the draft policy includes modification to the hours of operation of the messages and the number of messages displayed daily. And I wanted to bring this to the attention, because this was called out in the second review of the planning commission. So I wanted to make that, make that clear, is that they had referenced that the proposal was included shorter hours from eight to seven, seven days a week, and fewer... the proposal was included shorter hours from eight to seven, seven days a week and fewer messages with a maximum of three messages per day. But after reviewing the functionality of the marquee and use requests from two thousand and seventeen to date, staff suggests that the hours of operation be changed to seven to seven, beginning an hour and a half earlier in order to reach residents on their way to work and school drop-off. And staff also per day from three to five, so that the Parks and Recreation Department can accommodate public service announcements from the town, program and class announcements from the department and still be able to accommodate town-endorsed messages, which would be the happy birthdays, the congratulations that the town likes to see and celebrate each other. Staff request that council adopt the resolution approving the revised use policy for the digital marquee or reader board at the community center, seen attachments one and two. And staff request that town council consider delegating authority to the Parks and Recreation Commission to review and approve future policy decisions related to the use of the digital marquee as long as decisions comply with the current town of Portimera conditions of town project approval. And in advance of tonight's meeting, a public meeting notice was somewhere, summary was sent to residents residing three hundred feet from the community center seen in attachment six. So options tonight that I would hope that you consider is one, adopt the resolution nineteen two thousand and twenty-two, approving the revised use policy for the digital marquee as presented and delegate the responsibility of future use policy decisions to the Parks and Recreation Commission or adopt the resolution with modification and also delegate the responsibility of future decisions. Or three, provide further direction to staff.
Thank you. You're always efficient with your staff reports. I love them. Are there any questions from any town council members? Okay, I just have one question. I'm sorry, Leva, go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. I was just curious if you could explain a little about how the timing works, like if there's three to five messages per day, like, do you just split the day in thirds or fifths and do it that way? Or how do you do that? And if the messages start at seven AM and go till seven PM, does like a staff member have to be like onsite to start those and stop those? Like, if you could just explain a little of that, that would be great.
Sure, it's a bit of a, it's actually pretty cumbersome on the backend. It's, we've had a learning curve on how to to program the reader board. And Perry's actually the only one in our office that's worked with the scoreboard manufacturing company to help us understand how to program it. And she can set it a week in advance, but she has to be onsite to set it. So if there's any changes that need to be made, those have to be done onsite with the computer. It can't be done remotely, unfortunately. And I don't know how, I'm not as familiar with how often, how she scheduled, how often they switch. But essentially, if you have three messages or five messages, they're still going to be on the rotation, the same amount. You just might see them more often. So it shouldn't be any more disruptive to anybody that's driving or walking by.
Thanks, Lea. The only, the question I have is that, and it may be more directed towards Amy, because to me, we should be using a digital marquee also for public safety messaging. In other words, evacuation, flooding, anything along those lines. But there's no verbiage in the policy to operate outside those hours, I would assume, right? Because it looks like the message is flat out seven to seven. So if we needed to evacuate from Conceal Hill, I'm sorry, inside or something. Sorry, Todd, go ahead.
Yeah, I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, if there's an emergency, all policies go out the door and we'll use every resource available to the town. And so we would absolutely use that reader board and everything else available to us. So this policy would not restrict me.
Okay, all right.
That's it. We would absolutely, yeah.
All right, thanks. That's all I wanted to know. Any other question from town council members? Okay, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this topic? And while I'm looking for hands, Rebecca, do we get any emails in?
Thank you, Merkisisa. Yes, actually, we did receive an emailed public comment a few minutes ago from Peter Chase, who says, I support the changes to the hours and message quantity. In addition, I think the town should start the process to put a reader board on the east side in front of the fire station. Thank you, Peter Chase.
Thank you. And with that, I don't see any hands raised. I'll go ahead and close public comment. And I'll bring it back to town council for further discussion and a possible motion. Charles, you want to start us off?
I like it.
Is that, is that in the form of a motion?
I have to make a motion? Sure, I know to adopt resolution nineteen two thousand and twenty-two, approving the revised use policy of the digital marquee reader board.
Thanks. Is there a second? We'll go with Bobby, use a little quicker, Eli. Is there any other further discussion? Yeah, Eli, go ahead.
I just want to real quick thank Ashley, you, your staff and the Parks and Rec Commission for doing this. Policy looks great. And I feel like this is one of those things that can like just fall through the cracks, but I feel like you guys have been doing a fantastic job of kind of going through this big backlog and just kind of like making everything really orderly and systematic and making sure we've got policies in place to govern what we do. So thank you for that.
Thanks. Any other further discussion? Okay, I will go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mary Lee?
Yes.
Merkisisa.
Yes, thank you, everybody. With that, we'll go ahead and move to six B, consideration of possible adoption resolution number twenty slash two oh twenty-two, approving application for per capita grant funds. Back to Ashley.
I hope that this report pleases you more than the last one. Hopefully, it'll address one of your top priorities for your, for your goal planning as far as improving public restrooms and town park and potential funding for that. The background is that the mission statement for the state of California Department of Parks and Recreation is to provide the health, inspiration and education of the people of California by helping to preserve the state's extraordinary biological diversity, protecting its most valuable natural and cultural resources and creating opportunities for high-quality outdoor recreation. And the department has two divisions, community education, community engagement and the Office of Grants and Local Servages, which is referred to as OGLs, which is actually the department that reached out to us to let us know that there was funding available and if we were going to be applying for it. So thanks to them, we've done some research and we've mobilized a request for approval to submit an application. And the per capita grant program originates from Proposition sixty-eight, which is approved by voters in two thousand and eighteen. And funds for the programs were appropriated from the state budget. And funds are provided in two programs, the urban county per capita and the general per capita program. And the town of Portimera qualifies for the general per capita program that makes funds available to local park rehabilitation creation and improvement for local governments on a per capita basis. And the grant recipients are encouraged to utilize awards to rehabilitate existing infrastructure and to address deficiencies in neighborhoods lacking access to outdoors. And according to page five of the per capita program procedure guide, which is attachment two and very extensive, eligible projects are defined as capital outlay for recreation purposes, either acquisition or development. And ours would be qualified under development. Allocations are provided under the OGLs website. And according to the current listing, town of Portimera has an allocation amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. And a twenty percent match by the grantee is required and is calculated based on the project amount rather than the grant amount. And the more detail on the matching is provided in attachment in page thirteen of the attachment. And I've also included in the staff report just an overview of the grant process, which is provided on page six of the per capita grant program procedure guide that outlines requirements and expectations between the two parties. And based on the prioritization of improving public restrooms in town park by town council's annual work plan and from the community feedback in the master plan engagement process, staff has identified the opportunity to submit a development project supported by the per capita grant program. And the development project rules and costs are defined on page sixteen to eighteen on attachment two. And the scope and cost estimate is on page nineteen to twenty. And restroom is actually listed as an eligible recreation element. Prior to applying for grant funding, a resolution authorizing the filing of all application packets is associated with the contract and must be submitted to OGLs. So the authorizing resolution serves two purposes tonight. It's, one, is a means by which the grantee's governing body, town council, agrees to terms of the contract. It provides the confirmation that the grantee has the funding to complete and operate the maintained project associated with the contract. And two, designates a person, person title to represent the governing body, which would be our town manager on all matters regarding the projects associated with the contract. And the incumbent in the position is referred to as the authorized representative. And further information is also included in attachment two. So discussion tonight is, I request that town council review and adopt a resolution twenty two thousand and two, twenty-two, approving a submission of one application for the per capita grant to be used toward the installation of a new public restroom in town park. Staff regrets to inform council that staff has, must submit an application for funding as soon as possible. As it was brought to my attention that the applications were actually due in December, but they've been reaching out to agencies that haven't yet applied for grant funding to see if they plan to do so and have extended, have extended the deadline. So should you approve, authorize the resolution tonight's meeting? Both myself and I would be working with the Public Works Department to submit the application as soon as possible and get the ball rolling. Rough pricing for two modular restroom models was obtained by Public Restroom Company in January of two thousand and twenty-two by our Public Works Director. And that's included in attachment three to give you an estimate cost range of what a potential new restroom in town park could cost. And the cost range for the model that they provide, there's two models. One is three hundred thousand to three hundred and forty thousand and the other model is four hundred to four hundred and thirty thousand. And the preliminary estimate for site work for one large unit is about seventy-five thousand for utilities, water, sewer and electricity and twenty-five thousand for foundation. And if you consider a twenty percent contingency for design and construction included, the probable cost range is more like four hundred and eighty thousand to six hundred and forty thousand once the project completes the town planning process, and that's not including staff time. Before requesting town council approve the restroom project, staff will seek additional community feedback on design elements, location and perform additional site assessments and will obtain former project approvals. Fiscal impact is contingent on the town receiving the funding for the per capita grant program and is dependent on the total project amount. Again, the grant is for one hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-two and a twenty percent match by the grantee is required and is calculated based on the project amount rather than that grant amount. And more details are on page thirty-three of attachment two. So options I would hope you to consider tonight is adopt the resolution twenty two thousand and twenty-two, approving an application for per capita grant funds, either reject the resolution or provide further direction to staff.
Thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and open up for questions from town council members. Anybody have any questions? Yeah, Leva.
Thanks. And thanks, Ashley, for bringing this forward. Appreciate all the detail and thought that's gone into it. I'm just wondering if we were to apply for the grant funds and receive the grant funds, is there a deadline by which we have to use them?
I believe it is two years, but I have to go back and double check that. There's a lot of detail in attachment two.
Okay, okay. And then this doesn't involve, like, what we're looking at tonight, I know there were a couple schematics attached there, but you're not making decisions about design or anything tonight.
No, I wanted to give council a better perspective of what the project could look like. I didn't want to just come in and ask for an application without giving a sense of what twenty percent might look like.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I just have a couple. It's more on the grant money aspect of it. The hundred and seventy-seven thousand, is that rolled over from previous years? Or is it just for this year? And does that mean there's more grant money available potentially next year? You know?
Yeah, I don't know that off the top of my head. I'm not sure if Todd has any more information. I honestly have not read through attachment two as thoroughly as I'd like. I scanned it. But we're kind of in a crunch to get moving on the application process. Todd, do you have a better answer?
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, in previous years, really, the process is they do this on an annual basis. And so it's not something that carry over. They'll reset their funding and then they'll come back with new contribution limits next fiscal year. So it's not like we have a hundred and seventy thousand now and we could potentially have thirty thousand more next year. If we don't do this now, we would just have to reapply and, you know, their numbers will, will basically with whatever's left over and whatever they bring in the following year, they'll reset the contribution limits.
Okay, I guess, I'm sorry, I guess I'm trying to guess, is there, there's a potential next year then to pick up grant money again for a project in town?
That's my understanding.
There will always be, yes.
Okay, okay, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. And I don't see any hands raised. Rebecca, do we get any emails in?
Just refreshing one more time. Thank you, Merkisisa. No, we did not receive any emailed public comments on this item.
Thank you.
Any raised hands?
Thanks, nobody's hands. So therefore, I'll go ahead and close, close public comment, bring it back to town council for further discussion and a possible motion. Leva, would you like to lead us or kick us off?
Sure, thanks, Fred. Yeah, I think, I think it's sort of a no-brainer. If grant funds are available and it's a project that our residents are interested in, why wouldn't you move forward and apply for the grant? We can always figure out down the line what, you know, what actually makes sense. So I would support this.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Charles?
Just wanted to, Ashley, thank you for giving us the kind of drawings of the scope and size of a project that you might think as far as how to structure the grant. And just, you know, a lot of what I've seen for near-peer park and rec groups, these kind of modular buildings for restrooms are the way to go. And architecture in general, transportation, other things, they come prefabricated. So all the plumbing and stuff is already figured out. So there's a lot of cost savings involved with that. You know, the national park, the state parks have moved really to that system also. So, I mean, if there's something specific that we want in design, sometimes you can customize them. But also, you know, I think that the cost savings is so great on them, but, you know, it's about, we might look at a balance of what we're getting. But in general, I love grant proposals and I'll hardly ever say no to going and trying to get more money for the town.
Thanks. Anybody else? Yeah, Eli.
Thanks, Fred. Definitely agree with Leva's comments and kind of in the line of Charles' comments. I just wanted to clarify, and I know we're not talking design tonight, but actually, what the, these schematics from, from Public Restroom Company, were these literally just something you just grabbed to like show us what kind of we're talking about? This isn't like something that you guys have researched and are planning on proposing we choose between in the future?
I don't know that we'd pick the specific models. RJ and I'd have to go back and forth. These are model suggestions that were given to RJ through, through a very constructive conversation with the company. And I've actually worked with the company as well with getting preliminary information when I first came on. They're a key partner and sponsor of the California Parks and Recreation Society, as well as the National Park and Recreation Association. They've got a longstanding relationship. And I think it's really helpful. If you look at the schematics, they talk about the number of flushes and the number of people that they would accommodate per hour. And I think that's something that we really need to utilize when we're making decisions on what kind of amenities we want to install and how many restaurants we have in the park.
Got it, thanks. And with that, I'm happy to move resolution twenty two thousand and twenty-two, if that's appropriate.
It is appropriate. Is there a second? Bob, eat out, Leva, sorry. We'll go with Bob as a second. And just really quick, I'll just add two, just a couple of comments. Ashley, I appreciate all the work you did on this, finding money. I think it's great anytime we get money from the state coming in to help us fiscally, fiscally. And I look forward to seeing more drawings down the road and the location at a future date, hopefully within the next year or so. Plus or minus? Okay, thanks. And if there's no further discussion, I will go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mary Lee?
Yes.
And Merkisisa.
Yes, and again, Ashley, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and move six D, consideration of possible direction staff campaign finance reform and possible amendments to Portimera. Municipal municipal code pertaining required campaign contribution limits and voluntary expenditure limits. And before I turn it over staff, I just want to shout out and give a thanks to Phyllis Metcalf, who's I think is on the call. She did, I know, a lot of work on this, assisting staff especially, and also bring it to the town's attention. So I just wanted to thank her for that. So with that, Todd shuffling papers. So I'm going to turn it over to Todd and then Rebecca.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and I appreciate the introduction of Phyllis Metcalf. We're bringing her over now as a panelist because she is part of the team. That really helped Rebecca and as well as our town attorney put together the staff report for you. So this is a discussion item. This is a follow-up to our discussion back late last year. If this is something we want to do, and really at a high level, what we're asking, we want you to consider two things. One, you know, tonight, you know, give us direction. Do you want to retain the voluntary campaign expenditure program limits? Or two, do you want to repeal and amend the voluntary campaign expenditure program? You know, Phyllis is a political strategist in the state of California and she, she's our very own. And so she, she supports staff and I know this council in the town in a lot of areas, and she's really our resident expert. And so I'm going to defer to her in a second. But I'll just want to follow up to some of the high-level conversation we had late last year. And we, you know, staff has really looked at, well, if we did do something different than the state and amended this, would we have concerns or any issues at the staff level of how we enforce it? And we have some examples up and down the state. You know, we would recommend that we consider, you know, something administratively. Some agencies, you know, defer this to the district attorney's office for misdemeanor charges. You know, we, we do have the ability as a town to do something more administrative and reaching out to our cohorts. You know, we have Nibato, Sausalito have had, has had, you know, these, these roles in place for a period of years. I can tell you that in reaching out to their staff, they haven't had any issues where they had to investigate. any issues where they had to investigate or take action five, in the five, five to the seven of the last year, five to seven, going back five to seven years. The other thing that really jumped out at me, it's attachment two. Phyllis provided it for us. I believe there's 113 agencies that actually have, you know, changed their contribution limits. And so it gives us a nice perspective, not only from Marin County, our region, but really the state of California. And so staff thinks this is important, where the timing is right to bring this to you for consideration, to give us feedback. If you want us to bring this back to you, we can do it very quickly through the town attorney and bring something to you at an upcoming meeting and get this in place before the upcoming elections are before us. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our expert, Phyllis. So Phyllis, take it away.
Thank you, and I hope I live up to the kudos I've heard tonight. I'm gonna work around a little bit, just so you understand how we got to where we were. And the purpose of limiting campaign contributions and expenditures is really ethical and not just legal. And I'm going to read a quote from the late Justice Potter Stewart, which I think sums it up beautifully. Ethics is knowing the difference between what you have the right to do and doing what is right to do. And I think if we keep that in mind as I walk through this and we discuss this, it will be understood. Now, good government and public trust in the political system demand methods of financing political campaigns that should, one, enhance political equality for all citizens, two, ensure transparency and the public's right to know who is using money to influence elections, three, combat corruption and undue influence, four, enable candidates to compete more equitably for public office, and five, to allow maximum citizen participation in the political process. And the background goes all the way back to 1974, at the time that Jerry Brown was the Secretary of State, an office that most people forget he held. He is the one who drafted the Political Reform Act of 1974, which created the Fair Political Practices Commission. And there had been a lot of, of, let's call it corruption, that's what he called it, going on in the state. Prior to that, he found when he became Secretary of State, which had him do it. And his intent was to enforce government ethics through rigorous restriction on campaign financing, conflicts of interest, lobbying, and by promoting transparency in government. Since its creation, there have been numerous amendments over the years. But the two I think are most important for us to consider, because I'm not doing a whole workshop that I have to go out and do usually, are SB 1223, which was written by John Burton when he was the head of the Senate, the campaign contributions and expenditures, which covered certain limits on the amount of campaign contributions that an individual group can make to a candidate for statewide or elected state office, and on voluntary campaign spending. It was the first time statewide voluntary campaign spending had come up because back in the 60s, the Supreme Court found when there had been at the federal level mandatory contribution limits that they were illegal because political speech is legal, is free speech. The one that we are dealing with now is local government is AB 571. That was by Kevin Mullen, who is the pro temp of the Assembly. And essentially, what it did is it set local limits for local contributions and county offices in jurisdictions that did not already have it on their own as that 113 that Todd had mentioned earlier. One of the aims to stop, was to stop a system that has allowed local candidates ironically to exceed contribution limits in place for elective office holders who have more constituents. Seems like each time you take a step, another, somebody finds a way around it, and you need another step. It also allows local jurisdictions to enact campaign ordinances that provide for additional or different campaign requirements. And Todd may want to talk about it a little bit, and I have some information too, that could be, but what is, that can be interesting. What is, I found interesting personally is the fact, even though there are just 113 cities in the state that have had their own limits over the years, there are 179 California cities that have enacted ordinances that include local provisions that require a local enforcement of violations. And that they are listed on the Fair Political Practices website, and all of them can be, are linked, and there are PDFs from many of them where you can actually read them. Now, the cap on individual donor contributions is threefold. And it's really the money from a single donor, that is the concern. One is to curb the influence or the appearance of influence of large donors. Two is to ensure candidates have a broad base of support. Three is to incentivize community candidates. Those are people who have participated in the community. And there are two ways you can do that. Preferably, the way is through civic engagement, addressing issues of public concern through tenure and experience in jurisdiction, commissions, and committees. Second way is through community service, working with nonprofits, service, and youth organizations. Now, in Marin County at this time, there are only two cities who are known to have passed ordinances setting contribution limits from a single donor. There's Sausalito, which has a limit of 500, and Nevada, which recently raised its limit from 1,000 to 400,000, excuse me, from 2,000 from 400. The median campaign contribution for single donors set the ordinance of resolution by cities, which are the cities that are on this list, the ones that have fewer than 100,000 residents, it's 400. The range of cities, I went through it, that are similar size to Marin cities. This is a big range up to 100,000 residents. And they, they go from $100 to 550. Now, the voluntary expenditure limits can be made more desirable in several ways, but I'm just going to talk a little bit about it. They, candidates confuse, can actually choose whether or not they want to live in campaign spending. And they have to preset the ceiling. You can't get halfway through the campaign and say, okay, I'll go by the ceiling. Doesn't quite work that way. And I explain why it can't be mandatory. Those who accept the limits must declare on a candidate expenditure limit statement in writing the acceptance of the voluntary expenditure ceiling that is stated for the election. Now, on the 510, I think it is, the form where people, candidates declare for candidacy, for the statewide candidates, there is a line where you can actually check off and say you accept it, and the amount is written in. I don't know if the state will add that on to the filing forms for local at this point. But the individual cities had them. I have a copy of the one from Oakland, which is pretty, you know, goes through it all and very tightly done and stuff like that. Now, the merits of voluntary spending limits are an extension of what I mentioned for the limit on contributions, but there's one very important thing that is added. And that's to keep a candidate from buying an election for one's own reasons. Now, there are two cities in California, both much larger than Corte Madera, which current population is 10,029, that encourage their candidates, and I really like the way they encourage to accept the voluntary limits on campaign spending. And how they do it is a two-tier contribution limit system. In these two cities, the benefits of agreeing to limit campaign spending is that candidates who do so may receive contributions in greater amounts than those who do not. And one of them I've discussed with Rebecca in the past, and I think she has it in the staff report, but I'll review that fast and then go on to the second one, which is somewhat more complicated. The first one is Beverly Hills. The candidates who agreed to the limit spending ceiling of $80,000, and the 2019 population, by the way, there was 34,186. Those are the most recent figures I was able to obtain at this time. That candidate may receive $450 from a single donor per election. Well, those who do not agree have to limit their spending, to limit their spending, may only receive 125. So you see, there is a big difference in the amount of money you can get from a donor. Now, Oakland, as I say, is, I'll call it interesting. They have ceilings that actually vary among the seven districts. They're divided into districts as the largest cities in Marin are now being divided. But the averages are approximately 150,000 for each of the seven numbered districts. In 2019, when the total city population was 425,097, I figured out approximately there were 62,000 residents per each district. Now, the candidates who will accept limits on spending, we can receive $900 from a single donor. Those who do not can only accept two. So you can see the difference, and the encouragement is kind of like with an iron fist, if you're concerned about raising money for your campaign. Now, I, you know, this may all sound like a bunch of, I won't claim I'm a professor, but a teacher giving a lecture. I want you to see what can happen. The effect when you have unlimited campaign contributions without a ceiling on expenditures in Marin County. And I've gone through financial campaign statements going back many years. You know, they are public information. In the cities, they have to be posted on the city website. County, school districts, et cetera, are actually listed at the state through the Secretary of State's office. So nobody's getting away with anything. Okay. Both that the city and county levels candidates have received contributions in excess of a single donor limit that has existed for Assembly candidates since 1996. Exactly what brought on AB 571. An example at the county level is in 2014, there was a race for district seat on the Marin County Board of Supervisors. The approximate population per district is 52,000, by the way. 28% of the single donor contributions to that campaign, to that one candidate, were over the state assembly level at that time. And that candidate was successful. Now, looking at two city examples. $40,000 was budgeted and spent for a council race in Luxford some years ago. Their approximate population is 12,000. That candidate lost, but that candidate spent more than half of that budget with one's own funds. So there's an example of what happens when you try to buy an election. Thankfully, it didn't work.
Sorry, Phyllis, one more time. They spent more than half of that what?
That half of the money spent in the election was their own funds. They budgeted 40,000 and spent almost 30,000 of their own money. That's one of the fears of why you want voluntary limits on expenditures is you don't want people buying elections for their own reasons. Could be ego, it could be a project that's coming up that they want to influence in some way. You know, everybody, everybody deals on their own thing. The last one is recent. And one that bothers me considerably because it wasn't necessary. In November of 2021, over $40,000 was spent relying on contributions in excess of $47,000 in a race for a seat on the town council of Tiburon, and their population is actually less than ours, 9,144, and it wasn't even a full term. Just as an aside, when Kuhn Hart left, there was just two years left from his term. So under state law, an appointment could be made if you don't want to spend money on election. If it's more than two years, in this case, it was close to three, state law says you must have an election. So as I say, that's an aside that doesn't go with the limits anyway. Now, if a local jurisdiction imposes limitations that are different from limitation imposed by the contribution limits under AB 571, which is $4,900, which is the same as that for an Assembly candidate, the jurisdiction may adopt its own enforcement standards for a violation. And these standards could include administrative procedure, which could be a letter, that's a closure letter, an advisory letter, a warning letter, a civil action or criminal prosecution. Now, at the October 5th, 2021 council meeting, it was inferred that checking filings would be time consuming for the town clerk. I disagree, and the reason for it, I, looking at the filings for the past campaigns, there weren't filings done for the last one where Charles and Fred essentially were appointed, even though they won the ballot, because they didn't have anybody opposing them. But going back further than them, I would say to check the contributions from single donors under each of the appointments, the clerk would has to, you know, has to post all the forms anyway, so has to look at them. Might be 15 or 20 minutes total. That's for all of them. They're usually four candidates, maybe five candidates running. This is in San Francisco, where there are pages and pages and pages and pages. And by the way, San Francisco is limited to $500 per single donor. And they will get, you know, maybe 100 people giving $500. That doesn't happen in a town like Corte Madera. And any donation that is under $100, they're, they're added together, and you, an aggregate appears. The only donations that are listed separately with the name, address, profession, I think I hit them all, are those that are $100 and up, and I don't have a number in front of me. I had at one point, how many were in each of the candidates who ran in the election before Fred and Charles, which would have been Bob and Eli, Kuhn Hart, and there was a woman who ran too. There were four candidates for three seats. So as I say, I don't think you know, this is a major problem where our assistant town manager, town clerk, is going to spend weeks doing this. And I have told Rebecca and Todd that I would be more than happy to sit and show them how to go through them very fast. I also am willing, when Rebecca does a workshop for candidates who are not incumbents, but I don't think she picks incumbents out if they want to come, and does a workshop showing them what they have ahead of them, how to do things, I'm willing to come and do what I do in other places, and sit down and review how to fill out the form so much necessary. Because if you've never done it, it can be pretty scary. And it's very easy, but it's overwhelming when you first see it. Now, just the summary of our current status is, single donor donations have been for local candidates are to be no more than the Assembly member. That's $4,900. Each Assembly district contains a population of at least 465,000 residents. Each assembly district contains a population of at least four hundred and sixty five thousand residents. Our Corder Madera's current population is, uh, ten thousand and twenty nine. And we have seven hundred, seven thousand one hundred and twenty one registered voters. I checked with the, uh, county elections office. Corder Madera candidates having the same cap on contributions from a single donor as an assembly district candidate defeats the whole purpose of having limits. Because in that election that took place in Tiburon, there were several forty nine hundred dollar contributions. And I ended up in different categories, and I won't take your time because it's getting late. But between a thousand and two thousand, two thousand and three thousand, three thousand and four thousand, four thousand and forty nine hundred, I checked how many in each category, and you would cringe if you knew it. So I won't show it. I made a proposal. Uh, my proposal tonight remains the same as what I first requested in an email to town manager Todd Pusamano back on October eighteenth of twenty twenty one. This is how long we've been talking about. And also I had an exchange of emails with the town council, Amy Ackerman, uh, about correcting an error regarding an item that was on the agenda to repeal, let's see, it was chapter two point forty two. And basically what I said, one was to add a new section, two point four one, as respects local election required campaign contribution limits to establish its own stricter and more appropriate required limits from a single donor than the state default limit. And at that time, I referenced, and Scott has a copy, and I assume he shared it with Rebecca. Uh, Sausalito's chapter four point oh four of Title Four of the municipal code and its updates is the best template I see to follow it. Of going through probably close to a hundred of these uh, ones relating back to these hundred and thirteen cities. The one that was put together by a very good attorney in Sausalito is outstanding. I don't think anything else comes close to it. The work is actually done, it has the definitions, it has the follow through and everything else in it. And the second thing I said at that time was to update section, our section two point four two point oh one oh, which is the expenditure ce- ceiling, et cetera, subsection C, by eliminating the fi- the final phrase, quote, pursuant to government code section eight five six oh two, in accordance with regulations promulgated pursuant thereto. If that code was repealed a long time ago, and I see in the staff report that our town council agrees with me on this, so that shouldn't be a problem. There's no reason to keep a code that doesn't exist. And I mean, I've pretty much given a very fast overview. I would love to answer any questions, or Todd may have some things he'd like to add before I do.
Thanks, Phyllis, appreciate that. Um, we'll bring it back to town council. At this point in time, we're only going to do questions only. And I'm gonna split this and make it easier into the two pieces. So first up, we'll have any questions regarding campaign contribution limits, and then we'll go to the, um, voluntary expenditure limit. So at this point, does, thanks, Phyllis. Does anybody have any questions? Again, no discussion on campaign contribution limits. No questions? You must have done a really good job, Phyllis. Everybody gets this stuff. Okay.
So, how's that?
Uh-oh, send it to Todd. Okay, so with that, we'll move to part two, which is voluntary expenditure limits. Any questions on voluntary expenditure limits?
Uh, by the way, just one thing before I answer Lila's question. The state offices have voluntary expenditure limits that the state set. There were none set the local.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Lea, go ahead.
Thanks, and thanks, Phyllis, for the presentation and the detailed, um, report, and really appreciate your offer to spend your own personal time um, supporting staff on this. I just had a question about, um, like the example you gave in, uh, Beverly Hills, where they're trying to incentivize people to take the voluntary expenditure cap. Um, and I'm sort of combining that in my mind, I guess, with the example you gave in Larksburg of a very wealthy self-funded candidate. Am I understanding correctly that, like, basically regardless of what we do, we can't really do anything about somebody who's got a lot of their own personal money and wants to spend it on a, on a campaign?
Well, when there is a limit on how much you spend on the campaign, is there is something you can do?
But that's voluntary.
It's voluntary.
Right.
The person, but it's voluntary if that person has a lot of friends who are going to make, uh, donations of whatever the limit is that is set, if the limit is set. Now, the one that I gave in Tiburon, that person did not put in any of his own money and was able to raise forty seven thousand dollars and spent over forty one of it on the campaign. So that's what happens when there's no limit.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions from town council members? Yeah, Eli.
Right, I'm, I'm sorry, I misheard you on, on, uh, the first question, so I actually do have a question about the campaign contribution limits. Um, and I don't know if this is a question for Phyllis, who, by the way, thank you so much for this presentation, this was really, uh, really illuminating. Um, so I, this is a question maybe for Phyllis, maybe for staff, but I just wanted to get a little bit of a better understanding, and Phyllis already kind of touched on this of just what is involved for town staff when it comes to tracking, you know, like A, A, setting a campaign contribution limit, B, tracking contributions, C, creating an enforcement mechanism, and then D, actually enforcing if it comes to that. Um, and you know, my thought is just that, like, I definitely see the argument for, um, something along these lines, but I'm also aware that the state has just set a limit for us already, and that the state already takes care of, uh, you know, tracking all this for us, so I just want to make sure that if this was a responsibility that we were going to take voluntarily, take on to ourselves and on to our staff, that we, we really understand what we're getting into.
Okay, all right, but I'll try to walk through it as, as it happens. And, uh, you could look at Tiburon's website. And if you look at the November second, I think it was, two oh two one election, you will see where these are posted, and this is what, they have to be posted anyway, but you'll see what it is. You've been through this, Eli, so as you know, there are two pre-election filing dates where you have to hand them in. One a- after the election is finished, so there are three times. All that, and I will assume you'll still stick with us, Rebecca, I'll use your name, all that Rebecca would have to do. They have to be filed anyway, they have to come to her by a specific date. She has to look at them when she copies them to post them, because they have to be posted on our website. And just by turning over the pages, she can see because there's a section that is income and a section that is outgo. And as I said, anything a hundred dollars and under, whether it's a contribution or an expenditure, is aggregated. So they're not, as I say, it's not like a city like San Francisco, or several years ago, I did a campaign for the water district. And at that time, it was a hundred and forty thousand dollar campaign. I ended up having my own desk in Bank of Marin to go in every day to deposit the checks and keep the records and stuff like that, to ready everything for, uh, Bill Murray, who was the chairman of the board there, who was the official treasurer. This, Corder Murray doesn't have that. Corder Madera has never spent more than between three and four thousand dollars each candidate. That's what the simplicity of it, why it's easy. So as I say, the whole thing going through, let's say there are four candidates for the three seats up, I think, in November. Let's say there are four candidates again, like there was four and a half years ago, or five years ago, whenever. I guess four and a half. Fifteen or twenty minutes. That's all. I mean, Rebecca has to keep track and make sure they file by the dates, the specific dates given. Now, the only thing that's a little bit different, but it wouldn't happen if we had, I would hope, a four hundred dollar limit, no more than five. If you got a thousand dollar donation, you have to report it within twenty four hours. And it's on a different form that you have to mail in, and those get, I think it's a four ninety seven. Those get filed immediately and posted immediately. But if you have a limit that's under a thousand dollars, it's not going to happen. Say, it's not something that is terribly difficult. I wouldn't recommend it for a race that's a hundred thousand in campaign, because then your town clerk has a staff. It's not an individual. That's a whole different way to go. If you look at Oakland, Oakland not only has its limits and by district and stuff, there are certain ways, and I don't see where they've ever done it, but written into their ordinances, they will do some public financing of the campaign if you show need. How would you like to deal with that one?
Eli, do you have any other questions?
Uh, no, no, not right now. Thank you.
I got one question for Todd, for you and Rebecca. Um, as far as tracking limits, is that something that you think is doable? If you had to track them?
Yeah, I think it was a concern originally, how many we'd get and what the process would be, but as we've educated ourselves, we, yeah, so I think we're comfortable and we would, you know, obviously rely on, you know, Amy to, to set the, the process for us. And one other thing, you know, everyone does it a little bit differently, but what I, if we were to bring this back to you, and there, and we are, we do have an enforcement process of this, I would really urge the council to consider this being administrative. We don't want to, like, be enforcing, you know, misdemeanor violations. I mean, I just, I I would strongly urge you not to do that. So, you know, we do have a little work through the town attorney, um, you know, to put something together for you to review.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other questions from town council members, if I open up for the public? Okay, let me go ahead and open it for public. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on this topic? And then while I'm looking for hands, Rebecca, do we get any emails in?
Thank you, Marquesisa. I'm just pressing refresh one more time, and it, we did not get, receive any emails, public comments.
Okay, thank you. With that, now seeing hands raised, I'll go ahead and clo- uh, close public comment, bring it back to town council, and we're looking to provide direction to staff. So the first one is on campaign contribution limits. Phyllis, correct me if I have this wrong. Right now, we have, we follow what the state assembly does. It's a limit of forty nine hundred dollars for any individual to contribute to any one candidate.
Yes, it's a single, it's a single, it could be, if it's, um, a PAC or whatever, it's still forty nine hundred dollars.
Right.
So it's not a person, it is a single donation.
Right, which is what we're doing now. Um, and under that provision, state tracks it for us, so we don't have to worry. The flip side, it's a default option. The flip side to that is, we could also look at doing something which we establish our own limit, and I'm just gonna throw out a number anywhere from one hundred to four hundred dollars. And under that scenario, then the town would be tracking it. It sounds like Todd, from Todd and Rebecca, that it's not, that it won't be overwhelming from a staff standpoint. So those are the two options we're looking at, so I'll go ahead and open it up for discussion.
May I just clarify something?
Sure.
Whether it's the state or the town, tracking is done when the report is filed on a certain date. It's not something you keep track of. Once a week, you check to see what, you know, contributions have come in. It's the two dates before the election, when you receive the forms, and the one after.
Okay, thanks for that. Um, so again, those are the two options we're looking at, either leave it the way it is now, or change it where there's more of a limit. Again, anywhere from one hundred to five hundred dollars. Let me open it up for discussion, and Eli, I'm gonna start with you.
Okay, thanks, Fred. Um, you know, I, on the individual contribution limit, I feel like I kind of see both sides of it. On one hand, I, I feel like, uh, I'm sort of like, don't fix it if it's not broken. You know, I think a forty nine hundred dollar contribution in Corder Madera would raise a lot of eyebrows. I think that would strike a lot of people as ridiculous. I also don't think it's ever happened, and I, and I kind of question, like, would it happen? I don't know. And, and so like, obviously that, you know, obviously saying that it hasn't happened yet isn't a reason not to, you know, like, introduce a limit, but it's just a thought that I have as we, as we consider whether or not to take on, you know, responsibility for something that is currently done by the state. Um, I definitely appreciate Phyllis and, and staff explaining to us that it's not a huge administrative burden on their part to track this, so that does make me feel better. Um, in terms of the limit itself, if we were to go in that direction, and again, I really, I could go either way on this. Um, I don't think I would want it to be lower than a thousand. I, I don't know why, but for some reason to me, like, that it just feels a little restrictive to me to, to, uh, go below that. Um, you know, and I think, you know, it, it, I don't know. I think it's maybe just a personal judgment call, so to me, that, that doesn't feel, um, you know, overly restrictive or overly permissive, so that would kind of be my two cents on that issue.
Okay, um, Lea, Charles, Bob. Again, we're just looking to provide direction to staff. Uh, Charles, go ahead and then Bob.
I guess I, in hearing all the discussion, so it currently with the state, if there's a violation, is it automatically flagged as a misdemeanor, or do they also have an administration? So it's immediately a criminal offense, um, instead of like, hey, you know, local person that didn't know what they were doing is basically needs a letter to tell them to do it right. And I think that that's a huge issue, because I don't think, we've all established, you know, um, so I think that that's a big point outside of the actual numbers to acknowledge, that, um, and I think it's appropriate for the state. And I don't think they think it would be abused here, and if there is a egregious abuse, I know that it would be dealt with, um, appropriately. So I think that we all need to consider that. I took a lot of time, uh, Phyllis gave me a whole evening to go through this, um, you know. Like she had mentioned, uh, I was unopposed, um, in my election, even though I went to election, I also went to um, interviews where we could have gotten donors and we just decided not to take it, because, you know, I still wanted to share my opinions and work with the community, and it's, to me, it's, I do it because I love the community, not because of money, right? So to keep money completely out of politics would be perfect, but that's not the reality of being able to actually get the word out when, you know, the word matters against something else, so. Um, I actually like the idea of smaller amounts. I hear what you're saying, Eli, that I think the, you know, thousand, whatever, but, you know. The great president was elected on twenty dollars a person, right? So, um, you know, I, I, I think, and, and, and I, I do question, I, I feel like this last couple of years, right, it's about equity, it's about equality. And I think that basically leveling the playing field, uh, and, and making it about discussions and, and fair play and keeping money out of it is going to strengthen democracy, not weaken it. So that's why I want to stand behind what Phyllis is, uh, moving towards. Um, and then also, I think that by having it at the local level, when people come to apply and are working through it, I know Rebecca and any other future staff will be able to work with local residents, you know, just, um, concerned citizens that want to become part of the, um, council or anything else, and, and help walk them through them in a level that I don't think that the state's currently providing, so. That's, um, that's how I feel, and so therefore, that's, you know, I, I, I generally agree with the direction that the discussion's going.
So, I'm sorry, Charles, so you're looking at more like maybe a, um, us doing, um, our, establishing our own limit and maybe making it five hundred dollars?
Yeah, something like that, if that's the industry, if, if that's kind of moving towards the standard, and, and Todd and Rebecca think that it's appropriate to, uh, monitor it, um, through and, and take that on, then I, um, uh, I can, I, I can support it, I think it'll strengthen our community. And, uh, you know, what we're trying to do on the council in the long term, because I, I did, you know, I don't even question those large sums, but I do just wonder why someone would spend that much money for a council seat um, when they could donate it to a library or something. I think we have donors that are that large, but they, they, they do large capital projects to really improve our community instead of um, throwing it into something else, you know, and I, I love that, so I prefer it to stay that way.
Okay, thanks, uh, Bob.
Great point, Charles. Why would anybody spend that kind of money on a council seat, right? I mean, come on. But, um, I guess I've been through this more than anybody else on the council, I haven't been through a few of these. Um, I think five hundred dollars is very appropriate. We're a small town, everybody knows everybody, I like keeping the scale small. Um, and I don't think it's been an issue. Um, I've never certainly had anybody wanting to give me more than that. Not even close to that, actually, but I think that kind of limit, you know, kind of helps put things in perspective. Not even close to that actually, but I think that kind of limit, you know, kind of helps put things in perspective and keeps things small and friendly and personal, which is what things should be in a town this size. Thanks.
Thanks, uh, Lea.
Thanks Fred and thanks everybody for your thoughts. Um, I'm in agreement, I, you know, I generally support anything that reduces the influence of money in politics. Um, I think my. My only concern really, well, I was concerned about staff time, but it sounds like, um, staff is not concerned about it. So I'll, uh, I'll take that. Um, my only concern is for a self-funded candidate, you know, we do live in an area where there is a lot of wealth and, and it does seem like. Since we have, since we can't. Have a limit on expenditures, we can only ask that people do it voluntarily. If you were. Not a wealthy candidate, up against somebody who is a wealthy candidate, then even if we had. You know, um, contribution limits, that candidate could choose to self-fund and could really out, outgun you. Especially if you can only raise, you know, five hundred bucks per donation. So I think that's my only concern as far as figuring out what the dollar amount would be. I wonder if there's a way to split the baby with sort of one of those incentive. Systems like Beverly Hills did or something like that. Um, but in general, I'm supportive of this.
Okay, thanks. And we'll get to the other part, which is the, um. Expenditure part after we get, give direction staff on this. I think I'm in, I'm in agreement also with going with the lower dollar amount, say five hundred dollars. I think we are a small community. It seems like it's in line with other cities or towns that are our size. And I'm kind of like a numbers person. And the way I look at is right now, if under the state legislative, this is plus or minus because I'm rounding up. You could have five people giving almost twenty five thousand dollars versus somebody who's only. I could get twenty five thousand under the state legislative, again, plus or minus. Or I could just be getting twenty five hundred dollars from those same five donors. And that's a pretty wide difference for me to be using twenty five grand versus twenty five hundred. So to me, I'd rather keep it the five hundred level. Um, and it sounds like, again, talking to Todd, um, getting support from Phyllis and Amy and also Rebecca. Um, who would have to do this, that it's not like a huge staff time and they're spending hours to do this. It sounds like it's pretty easy to do. So that's the direction I could see moving in. Um, Eli, yeah, I'll go back to you because I know you're, you're on the thousand dollar limit.
Yeah, and, and like, again, you know, I don't even know if anybody's ever made a thousand dollar contribution in Corder Madera or if anybody ever would. Um, uh, so it's not, you know, it's, it's not like a hill that I'm going to die on. But the one thing that I did want to just point out is, and by the way, Phil, thank you so much for providing us with this, this common cause chart. Cause that's really helpful for us to understand. Um, but just to make sure that we're doing apples to apples, right? Sausalito was five hundred bucks, which, you know, if, if that's what we feel is right for Corder Madera, I think that's perfectly reasonable. Nevada just increased theirs to a thousand dollars. And so it's easy to look at Nevada's population of fifty thousand, five times our size and say, well, you know, there, there's a thousand because they're a big city. But they're in five districts, right? So each of their districts is the size of Corder Madera. So it's, it's still, you know, it's still a thousand dollar, uh, individual limit for a district the size of Corder Madera. So I just wanted to put that out there to make it apples to apples. Um, go ahead, Phyllis.
You, you're on mute. Phyllis, you're on mute.
Okay, so okay.
Yeah, you're good.
Um, what they're doing in Nevada is very controversial. It had been four hundred dollars for several years when they ran citywide. The last election was by district. Uh, this came up recently and, um. There is quite a damning editorial in the Marin IJ, which I have a copy of about it stating the same thing you just said, the same thing I'd said all along. And it was. The idea of a friend of mine and I've had several discussions with her, as has Dick Spotswood. And we've explained that you're running with one fifth of the amount of people, why are you doing this? And the answer is, well, we've got to send, mail has gone up. In Nevada, for some reason, they think during a campaign, they have to send out a flyer once a week. You're smiling, Eli. You know what it takes to buy a flyer. You've done it. It is. It's not a good idea and they're getting a lot of feedback and it may not end up at a thousand. I put that in because that's what they've done. You know, and you could see where it had been four hundred for several years. They have a number of extra things. If the, they had another filing. Three days before the election, you have to file any more contributions you've gotten since your second filing. Pre, your second pre-campaign filing. They added a bunch of stuff into it, which I wouldn't recommend because. You know, being a council member. Is not a career. That you're going to spend eight hours a day working on. All the time. So, uh, that's what the thousand dollars is about and you could look up. Or I will send it to you, the editorial from the IJ. I am going to send each of you after the meeting, a copy of what I spoke about, so you can look at it and do any more research if you wish to. And Eli, if you want, I will send you the editorial from the IJ about Nevada.
Sure, I'd love to see that. And in the meantime, Fred, the five hundred dollars I think is perfectly reasonable. So that's totally fine with me.
Okay, thanks Eli. So it sounds like we have a consensus to give direction to staff, which is we're looking at doing a five hundred dollar limit. Correct? We're good with that? Okay. All right, moving apart, I'm sorry.
Could I respond to something Leila said? I agree with you that there are people you're never going to control. But people who. Agreed to the limit, their names are going to be put on the town website. Their names should appear in the Chronicle each week. And it should say, and Jane Jones did not agree to do it. In the Chronicle. The person who spent forty thousand, spent thirty thousand dollars of her own money of the forty, lost. People knew what happened. At that time in Markspur, no more than three thousand dollars had ever been spent on a council election. People are getting wiser when they see some of the corruption that is happening at a much higher level in the town.
Thanks, Phyllis. Um, so we're going to go to part two now, which is voluntary expenditure limits. If I have this correct, there's some verbiage in here that needs to be revised automatically, right, Amy? Because it's outdated. So that to me is kind of like the easy part. Then part two is, again, we have a dollar amount with this, which is, it's based upon a state formula and I have this right, right now. It's five thousand fourteen dollars and fifty cents, which we can either go with that formula. Or we can also set our own limit. So I guess the question is, do we want to retain the state of California? Um, formula that we're using, which is a little bit over five thousand? Or do we want to set our own limit? And with that, I'll go ahead and open it up to Lea. I'll catch her off guard. Somebody has to start. And again, we're looking to give direction to staff on which way to go with this.
I'm going to punt to somebody else. I'm trying to get my head around this right now. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Thanks, sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's okay.
Charles?
Well, I, I mean, I, I didn't really go through it and see how much it would cost to run a campaign as someone like Bob or Eli have. So I really want to hear from them as, I'm not opposed to either. Um, and, and I think if you were, you know, uh, but. Uh, yeah, I, you know, ultimately, I don't want to spend a lot of, like, I like doing what I do, but I don't want to see, you know, feel like I have to. Throw tons of money away in any of this. So anyway, we can kind of agree. As a group, um, what that is, you know, what a, what a fair, fair amount is. And I, I'm fine with supporting that if, if, you know, that makes sense, but.
Okay, and it, and I'm sorry, it doesn't have the amount that we established. It could be the state one, which is a little bit over five thousand. Go ahead, Bob.
Uh, if I would change it to anything, I would change it to five thousand, but we're already at five thousand and fourteen for the state. So can we just leave it there and not have to worry about discussing this in a meeting again? And, and going through all this and having staff write a bunch of stuff? So I would say just leave it at the state limited five thousand and fourteen.
Okay, Eli?
Yeah, again, like I would say, don't fix what isn't broken. Um, but let's definitely correct that one bit of language that refers to outdated state law. But other than that, you know, no strong feelings.
Okay, and I'm good with leaving it to five thousand fourteen also. Lea or Charles, any comment input?
Yeah, I agree. I kind of like it being a, being tied to population. So even though five thousand fourteen is kind of a weird number, I like the, the point behind that.
And fifty cents.
Don't forget the fifty cents.
Charles, any comments?
This, um, you know, uh, I know we just recently had a census, so I think the numbers are going to change by the time we go through this, maybe. But, um, you know, TBD. But yeah, I, I'm fine with the state.
Okay, thanks. So it sounds like we have some consensus. Uh, Todd, you, Amy have direction on this thing. Looks like we're just leaving it at the, um, state. We'll use a state formula and then you'll just tweak whatever verbiage you need to tweak to update, um, our existing law, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that was a long one. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate on that one. Phyllis, thank you very much, especially for the background and all the time you spent on this. Um, again, greatly appreciate it. You're on mute again. I think she's saying thank you. You're on mute. You're good. All right, thanks, Phyllis.
I was just saying thank you and nodding my head, wishing you all luck and taking the next step.
Thanks, appreciate it. I'm sure staff will be going back to you.
Okay, and I shall leave you all now.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, that concludes our business items. With that, we'll go ahead to town managers report. Todd?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My only report is that we are, um, working, actually Rebecca is working hard. So thank you Rebecca to have our first, you know, returning to our first public meeting. Um, we are on track for the April nineteenth meeting and somewhere to come on that, but we. Unless we hear otherwise from the council, that is going to be our first, uh, back to in-person meetings.
Any questions, any questions for Todd? I just have one quick question, but it's unrelated to that, but gas prices going up, does that affect our fleet at all? Um, or costs, I, well, obviously would affect the cost. I know gas has skyrocketed lately or any equipment that we're using.
Yeah, with the diesel, it's a good question. We'll probably see an increase to our line, our gas and diesel line item by about twenty percent with, with the way it's going. And so, um. You know, we're taking measures now to try to offset some of those costs, but. It, it, it absolutely will have an impact and it's something we're going to have to strategically think about, uh, moving into, uh, next fiscal year.
Yeah, all right, thanks. Any other questions for Todd? Okay, we'll go to town council reports. Eli, you're all smiles.
Thank you. Just so tickled to be with you guys. Uh, just two quick items. Uh, CMSA issued, uh, the Central Insanitation Agency issued their pension obligation bonds. Uh, for ten point five million dollars. That actually came down. Basically CalPERS had a banner year and so their unfunded liability went from fourteen million to ten and a half. So that was some, some nice news there. Um, we also received a presentation at the last CMSA meeting, uh, of a big study we commissioned on tertiary recycled water. Basically, um, how much it would cost for us to generate, build, you know, build the infrastructure to generate different amounts of recycled water. That is, uh, appropriate for all non potable uses. So like unlimited landscaping, things like that. Um, the idea being that, you know, even if this drought is maybe over, question mark, it's certainly not going to be our last one. Um, and the, and, you know, I think we're, we're all kind of feeling like we need to not, you know, let up on the gas pedal in terms of. Uh, making sure that we're identifying new sources of water and, and really working on enhancing Marin's water resilience. Um, so that was really cool to get that presentation. The big takeaway from it was that at the CMSA plant right now in Anderson Drive. We could build, basically the range of systems we looked at were between sixty five and two hundred gallons per minute. Um, those would be basically like two residential and one commercial, like truck fill stations operating, uh, all day for, for residents and businesses to come and just fill up. You know, jugs, cisterns, whatever they want with recycled water that they can use for landscaping. And the, the price tag on that system would be between three and a half to four point three million, depending on what size system we went with. So it's a really big, uh, really big investment. Uh, so the board's thinking very carefully about it. But I think, um, you know, I, I think it maybe ties into sort of like a larger reimagining of like, does, does CMSA want to be just a sewage treatment plant? Or does it want to be a resource recovery agency? Um, and I think the board is really kind of leaning more in that latter direction, looking at how can CMSA leverage everything that it has at its disposal? To really do the most good for Marin County, um, and for the environment. So that's been an interesting conversation. We've got in May, another report coming on direct potable reuse, which is advanced treatment. That would be, if this was a big project, that would be an enormous project. Um, so I'll let you guys know what we hear about that, but you know, these two together will basically cover, um, CMSA's kind of own internal look at what could we do to help address water security in Marin? So that's really interesting. Um, and then the other thing, we just had an MCCMC Water Policy Committee again, and we heard from a citizens group. The Marin Coalition for Water Solutions, and it was just interesting to hear what they had to say. Um, you know, I think they share the concerns of probably all of us and, and most of our residents of just, hey, look, feels like we got caught kind of flat footed during this last drought. Um, you know, it feels like MMWD had, you know, plenty of time, uh, to, to, you know. Secure alternate sources of water and maybe expand our storage capability. And, and I, I think they're, they're just kind of feeling like, uh, we need a little bit more imaginative approach in terms of, uh, how we're looking at additional water sources and expanding. Storage, uh, capability. So it was interesting to hear from them. Um, I will report back to you guys as that committee moves towards, you know, putting together any sort of resources or recommendations for, uh, towns like Corder Madera. But that is all I have for now.
Thank you, uh, Bob.
Yes, uh, I attended a, uh, public information session for the Marin Wildlife Protection Association where we talked about. The thirty eight mile long shaded fuel break that is going to go in around the Ross Valley in the next few years. And it was really amazing. We had about eighty people from the public attend this thing. Couple of quick facts about it. It's going to be two hundred feet wide. It's going to be very similar to what was being done on, what we did on Lower Summit Fire Road. If you're interested and you want to see what it looks like. Uh, but basically it removes all the underbrush, non-native plants, lower limbs, that leaves the shade trees in place. Um, so what happens is when the fire hits it, it doesn't actually completely stop the fire, but the fire burns way, way down and firemen are able to get control of it. So, um, hopefully we're going to get that done in the next couple of years, but it's all the way around the Ross Valley. Thirty eight miles long. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Lea?
Thanks Fred, nothing for me this week.
Okay, thanks, Charles.
Yeah, uh, so, um, tomorrow I'm actually touring the new north south Greenway Bridge over, uh, Portimera Creek, uh, concrete support. So we'll be able to walk on it and inspect it as, uh, TAM commissioners. Um, and later, uh, in the spring, early summer, it will be expected to be open. So I'm excited to report out how that's coming along. Um, and then also TAM, uh, sent out a letter, um, to all the municipalities. And they're, uh, looking for feedback on ways to strengthen, um, proposals and understand what future needs are for EV infrastructure. Um, for all the different municipalities in Marin, um, and then also, uh, fleets. And anything else, which I think, you know, going back to the fuel discussion. Um, I know that, uh, there's a lot of exciting things and, and, uh, they're anticipating, you know, a pickup in our interest. To kind of be more resilient and self-sufficient on the energy and transportation side. Um, and so, uh, they're making moves towards that. And I know our own town is also, um, uh, moving that forward and has really great ideas on ways to, uh, strengthen our position. So, um, that's what I've been working towards. Um, yeah.
Okay, thanks. And then for me, I attended Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, uh, was appointed board chair, um, for this year, um, for that authority. Um, and the only thing there, but again, more information will be following is our paramedic tax, which I think will be hitting the ballot in November, not in June. But again, it's kind of premature. Um, there's not a lot of information on that yet. Just want to give everybody's heads up. Uh, and then, uh, Twin City, I also attended Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Committee. Um, the only thing there is last weekend, last Sunday, because we changed the clocks, um, the NRGs did their drills. And I just heard a lot of positive feedback, um, that there's quite a few of them that participated. I know I participated, the one at Demerina Estates in my neighborhood. Um, and that seems to be going really well and going strong. Um, and then just one last thing, just to get plug in there, Mayor's Forum next Tuesday, five thirty. Guest speaker will be Adam. Um, hot topics obviously are the housing element and also SB nine. And again, they're open discussions. And that's all I have to report. And with that, we will move to the draft agenda. If anybody has any changes or any additions, uh, please do that, either myself, Todd or Rebecca know. And if there's no further business to come before us, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting and we do have our SD two meeting tonight. So with that, I'll shuffle my papers and find it. Uh, I will go ahead and open up the S two, SD two meeting. And with that, uh, called order, Rebecca, can we get a roll call, please?
Thank you, my Chrisisa. Um, Board Member Becklin?
Here.
Board Member Mongen?
Here.
Board Member Ravazia?
Here.
Board Vice President Lee?
Here.
And Board President Casissa.
I hear, uh, this time I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to speak, please raise your hand. Please note that we only have one member, um, from the public attending and she's a town employee. Just let everybody know. Rebecca, do we get any emails in? Please note that we only have one member from the public attending and she's a town employee. Just let everybody know. Rebecca, do we get any emails in?
We did not receive any emails, public comments for the sanitary district.
I'll go ahead and close public comment. We have no presentations tonight. It'll bring us to the consent calendar. These are items that have been previously discussed. They can be approved by a single motion. Any member of the district board, staff or public can request that item be removed and further discussed. So with that, is anybody from the board, staff or the public, again, nobody from the public, one staff and town employee wishes to pull, have an item pulled. And Rebecca, do we get any emails in on this?
Did not receive any emails, public comments, or yeah, public comments on consent calendar items.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close public comment. I'm looking for a motion to approve consent items for A through four C. We have a motion by Bob. Eli, or I'm sorry, not Eli. Lila, you got, you beat Eli out. Eli, or sorry, Lila seconded it. And if there's no further discussion, go ahead and call for the vote.
Board Member Beckman?
Yes.
Board Member Mongan?
Yes.
Board Member Avasio?
Yes.
Board Vice President Lee?
Yes.
And Board President Casissa.
Yes, we have no public carry tonight. I will go to six A, which is our first business item. Is to authorize the dismerger, execute a First Amendment addendum to increase the scope of agreement for the sewer master plan with GHD Group by a hundred and sixty thousand. And with that, I will turn it over to RJ.
Good evening, Board President Casissa and members of the board. So this item is somewhat of a little bit of an update on the master plan, also a request for additional funds. So the master plan effort has been going on for about ten months and the product team has been working hard, making a lot of progress. They have completed close to almost all of the CCTV, the closed circuit television around town, which involves flushing and videoing those pipes to get their condition assessment. And so nearly twenty miles of that have occurred within the town. So, so quite a length and a lot of work that's been going on. Maybe you've seen it through our crews and factor trucks out and about. As part of this ask, there are several items that have led to some proactive measures to provide a better scope and others to address some issues that have come up. As part of this CCTV effort, there was more groundwater and more debris that was experienced than expected. And so normally you would have in a, in a best case scenario, you would have just a video truck that would, you know, video and catalog those, those pipes, those sewer mains, but sometimes you have sags in the lines, sometimes you have groundwater and the water and also debris cause issues with that, that recording. And so you then have to first flush them, clear them out effectively. So you can actually see the condition of the pipe and remove the water and get a good reading of the condition. So it's a whole separate crew, whole separate factor truck that does that. So as you can imagine, costs can add up quickly. So we did experience probably close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of additional CCTV work as part of that effort. In addition, as the, the team has learned more and has worked collaboratively, we've kind of come up with some value engineered approaches. So I'm going to start a presentation to kind of walk through some of that. And you all see my PowerPoint?
Yep, you're good.
Great. All right. So touching, yeah, just on schedule, you know, here we are about ten months in. Started in spring of last year. And thus far, it's been mainly that data collection and taking all that information, putting it into our GIS database, which will be kind of the, the, the main component, the brains behind our system that, that tells us kind of, you know, what areas to focus on, whether it be in CIP or maintenance. So we're, we're getting through that first data collection and kind of heavy field effort. And as part of that, we, we're starting to look ahead to pump stations and those sorts of field assignments and office assignments that really collect all that data and compile those as well. And one of the factors that I think helped the team kind of come up with some new ideas was, you know, we did have a pretty significant event back in October, October twenty-fourth, if I'm not mistaken. And that really did kind of in some ways give us a real life view of how the system behaves in a big storm. And so we did have a fair amount of risk assessment modeling work in the scope and having seen that we actually did not sustain a sewer overflow during that event, although we did have some close calls. It did give us a good amount of confidence in our overall system. And furthermore, something else that was kind of viewed as an area that wasn't really addressed in the initial scope was what we're calling our force main asset. So I'll get to that. But before I leave this page, I did want to reference this kind of red pin over here that we do have a legal deadline of September tenth of this year to finalize our condition assessment report. That includes the, the pipeline conditions as well as a desktop study of many of the pump stations and force mains. So we're here because part of the ask is to kind of get back to keeping the project moving forward and advancing that deadline so that we obviously don't miss it. With that, I'm going to go to the next page. So here's a quick bullet summary of a lot of the revisions that I'd like to discuss with you. So I mentioned the additional funds needed to address the groundwater and debris that was not expected at the levels that they encountered. The other was this, what we're calling enforcement assets, a robust field investigation, including confined space entry. So we have our collection network with mainly has gravity pipes that flow to various pump stations. And they then get pumped all the way to CMSA. And, and so that's not a downhill gravity flow system. Those are actually pressurized pipes and get pumped primarily from our Paradise Pump Station. And so many of those pipelines are underground or have vaults and other features that are in these vaults. And it's easy to kind of just kind of not think about them and assume all things, all things are good. But in reality, you know, they're very important. And when you're talking about pressure, pressurized flows, that, that's could lead to heavy volume. So it's something that we need to not just put eyes on, but actually, I think the idea here is to do testing and more detailed analysis and including these confined space entries, which involves putting someone, you know, down in these areas with you know, D water equipment, having blowers that put fresh air down there, having safety harnesses that can pull them out in a pinch if something goes wrong. And really, it's a a pretty specialized operation, but a much, much needed one because this is really an activity that we may only do, you know, once a decade. In addition, you know, as part of some of the recent storms, we did see a couple of our pump stations that have tidal inundation with some electrical components that seem to be a little closer than we'd like to, to those tides and those, that stormwater. And so we want to have those looked at much closely, closer by a electrical engineer professional and then have that information folded into the master plan. We've also think it's a good idea to do some field performance testing on our primary pumps at Paradise Pump Station. They've been in service for long enough that it's good to do a check-in and see kind of how much remaining service life they have and whether it should be an immediate project or one that maybe can be deferred, you know, three to five years, but now is an opportunity to get a good look at their, their current condition. And then as mentioned, you know, a couple of minutes ago, you know, some of the things that, that were are being proposed or removed are this capacity modeling and risk assessment due to recent system performance and also in general, historically and looking forward, the overall growth in Corder Madera is relatively low compared to other districts statewide. And so we don't see a huge spike that could necessitate a major reactions in, in our, you know, collection pipe network and its overall capacity. The team also did have some credit savings in several areas that have been folded back into the scope. And as part of some of these tasks, the team is asking for an additional six months for items that aren't tied to any sort of legal obligations. And so in general, that is the item before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, RJ. Are there any questions from board members? No. Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and open up to public comment. And I don't see any hands raised. Rebecca, do we get any emails in?
We did not receive any email comments.
Okay, with that, I will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board for discussion and/or a possible motion. Yeah, Eli.
I'm happy to make a motion, but I also wanted to just say that I was really glad to see RJ and your report that there were some electrical issues that were identified to fix that. I think the Paradise Drive Pump Station, because I had heard, you know, a, a couple of times from, from different staff at CMSA over the last couple of years that, that I guess there have been historically some issues with that pump. And so it's been on my list to like follow up with you and Todd about, and I'm glad to see that you guys have beat me to it. So excellent stuff. Glad you guys are doing the work. Definitely understand where the overage is coming from and how it's justified. And I am happy to make a motion to authorize a first addendum to this contract for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Thank you. And Charles seconds it. Is there any further discussion? Okay, go ahead and call for the vote.
Board Member Beckman?
Yes.
Board Member Mongan?
Yes.
Board Member Avasio?
Yes.
Board Vice President Lee?
Yes.
And Board President Casissa.
Yes. And with that, we'll move to six B to approve an additional five percent contingency funds in the amount of a hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars for the two thousand twenty-one sewer rehabilitation project. RJ, you're back on.
Yep, great. Thank you. So this item is to request five percent additional contingency for the twenty twenty-one sewer rehabilitation project. This is the project that is ongoing and has been ongoing since summer in the Granada Park area. So I'm sure Board President Casissa, you've had a front row seats, all of that, and it sounds like things are moving all right. So we're getting close. And overall, the, the contractor has moved pretty quickly and we've had, you know, I think overall good results, but we did experience a number of design issues. Some of the recordings we use, by the time we actually got into the field, were a little outdated. And so it resulted in about six hundred and thirty linear feet of additional sewer main and five additional spot repairs and two additional manholes amongst some other smaller miscellaneous items. We've had a consultant inspector who's, who's been on top of it, working closely with Chris Good, our senior civil engineer. And the contractor has been, you know, relatively cooperative and willing to kind of fold in things as needed. So overall, it's, it's been pretty smooth, but overall the costs have gone in excess or appear to or approaching going in excess of the approved contingency amount that was set at ten percent. And before we get to kind of a point of asking question, I did want to kind of frame that the original engineer's estimate for the project was through three point four million for the base bid, not including a ten percent contingency. And they did come in very low, this particular contractor, and they came in at two point six four eight million. And then even with the original ten percent contingency was at two point nine. So in a, in a, in summary, even if you did approve the additional five percent, we're still you know, three hundred thousand under the original engineer's estimate before you even tack on additional contingency. So from an overall product standpoint, we feel we've gotten a good value and out of this project and this effort. So I'll open up for questions.
Go ahead, Charles.
Yeah, so I mean, just to clarify, usually when I think of contingencies, it was unexpected, but usually it's the same scope delivered, it just costs more. But what you said was there was actually six hundred and fifty linear feet of new pipe that was discovered after you opened up the ground. And so you're asking for five percent more to cover that. And to me, that's like an add-on. It's hardly a contingency really. So I can easily understand if I, if, if that's what I really heard. I mean, it's semantic thing, but that correct?
That's correct. Yeah. You know, I'm sure there were, you know, a percentage of that was some unexpected utility that was in the way that took longer, that you didn't get a benefit out of. But yeah, by all means, the, there was more pipe added to the project and several manholes added. So overall, a greater benefit for the value of the project.
Thanks, Charles. Lila, did you have a question?
Thanks. Yeah, I think it's answered kind of by the point Charles made that this is sort of a unique and known saying that is causing the overage, but just whether you anticipate. I know it's hard to always anticipate, but do you anticipate that this will, that there would be another, or is this seem like this is going to cover it?
Yeah, part of the, you know, we considered coming a little earlier and we, we decided to wait a little bit before we had a, a more certain dollar amount to request. And so I, I think we're, I think we're at the end of the, the ask. You know, we're, we're not that far from completing. But yeah, we did consider coming sooner, you know, a month or a month and a half ago, but decided to wait for that reason. So hopefully that was an, an okay decision to, to kind of wait for that more certain dollar amount.
Thanks, Lila. I, I just have one question for you, RJ, because I know there's a couple of residents on El Camino. There's issues with respect to flooding. And I think that, did that get resolved? I know you were doing, the team was doing work in that area also, because I assume it was in scope on this, right?
Yeah, there are a couple of different things that happen. So I mean, there's generally some ponding or local flooding in that area, right? So that's something that we are addressing as part of the project this summer, which will be a rotor surfacing project that will have some storm drain improvements. Separately, I think during the work, there were a couple of storms where because of some of the construction materials, it may have blocked some of the flows that otherwise would have gotten storm drain and hopefully, you know, we've worked through those and hopefully the, the residents are made whole in those situations. And then we also unexpectedly had to the MMWD had two emergency water breaks that were the pipe unexpectedly lifted out of ground and caused some damage to their facility in the roadway we had to work through. So so number of things, but by the end of, hopefully, end of summer or kind of early fall, everything will be all buttoned up and pretty and you'll have a nice, you know, resurfaced roadway.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions from board members? Okay, that I'll go ahead and open up for public comment. I don't see any hands raised. Rebecca, do we get any emails in?
Okay, there we go. I just refreshed and no, no, not receive any email to public comments.
Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board. I just have one quick comment. And RJ, you're right, because I'm in that neighborhood. Lots of heavy equipment moving around there all the time. But the team that's out there, they're really great as far as trying to get people in and out of their homes. They're totally respectful that as best that they can, even if streets are blocked off, they'll redirect. They'll move bulldozers, whatever they have. If residents are trying to get in and out, so just a compliment to them on that. And with that, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the additional five percent contingency funds in the amount of a hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred for the two thousand twenty-one sewer rehabilitation project. Is there a second? Bob seconds it. Any other discussion? I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Board Member Beckman?
Yes.
Board Member Mongan?
Yes.
Yes.
Board Member Ravazia?
Yes.
Board Vice President Lee?
Yes.
And Board President Casissa.
Yes. And with that, we'll move to, are there any board or district manager reports? Okay, going, going, gone. With that, I'll move to item number eight, that we don't have a draft agenda yet. But again, if anybody has any items, please let myself, I want to say RJ or Rebecca know. And with that, if there's no further business to come before the board, I'll go ahead and adjourn the SD two meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Night, everyone. Thank you, Fred.
Thanks. Have a good night.